I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You’ll note the absence tonight of one of our colleagues, Mr. Grocott. He is unfortunately home ill, and we wish him well, a speedy recovery. We’ll move on to item three, changes to the order of the agenda. Are there any changes from staff? Hearing none. Are there any changes from any of my colleagues? Then we will move on to item four, council communications and announcements, and we will start with Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I hope Matt gets recovered quickly. I had several things I want to talk about tonight, just briefly. One is, I think we do have another council meeting before the election day, but for those of you who, like many people in San Carlos, are voting ahead of time, remember to get out and vote. It’s important. I also want to just take a brief moment to publicly recognize and thank a staff member who, without going into a lot of details, there was what appeared to be an intractable problem that a homeowner was facing, was something they wanted to do. And I just want to recognize and congratulate Al Savay for doing what so many of our staff do so well, which is to look at the impossible and find a way to make things work and keep our fingers crossed that things will work out. So Al, just want to thank you for that and give you some well-deserved recognition. Now, as far as sidewalks are concerned, I’ve talked about this a few other times in the past, but I want to put some faces to some names on a particular issue that I believe all the council has been acquainted with. This family portrait, extended family portrait, are the people who own and have operated for many years the Little Store on Devonshire Boulevard. And that’s David Wong in the middle and his daughter Sheila on the far side. You can see a little bit in the background some of the damage that they’re being asked to repair, but it’s quite expensive. It’s about $6,000. And since David and his wife, who are lifelong San Carlos residents, are elderly and on a significantly reduced income, it’s a major burden to them. In particular, they also, as a number of people at the recent Transportation and Circulation Commission meeting pointed out, quite a bit of the damage, in their opinion, was caused to the sidewalks and the curbs based on utility trucks and, to some extent, city trucks as well, driving up there and doing work. That new sidewalk concrete you can see here actually is concrete that was laid down about a year or so ago by PG&E after they did some work there. So I do hope that the council will revisit the issue that I brought up several times in the past, which is that I think we ought to adopt a cost-sharing arrangement, a 50-50 split with property owners, given the fact that both property owners and the broader community benefits from keeping sidewalks in repair. One last thing about the financial side of my sidewalk repair proposal, which I brought up at the Transportation and Circulation Commission, and I realized I had not done this for my colleagues, so I want to take the opportunity to fix that here. This chart shows you a comparison of, going back to 2007, the year-over-year changes in the financial reserves that the city has. This is money that’s in the bank to pay future liabilities and/or bills or do projects that we want to work on. And you’ll notice the blue bars are quite large, particularly after the restructuring that the city did, outsourcing the police and fire departments back in the late years of the last decade. Those little tiny, sometimes they look like orange, they’re actually supposed to be red, but there are so few pixels there, they look orange. Those little tiny bars down the bottom, that’s the impact of if we were to split the cost of doing sidewalk repairs in a typical year, 50-50, between homeowners and the, or property owners and the city, what the impact would be. And I would submit to you that that’s relatively negligible, in fact, it’s almost insignificant. And that too is an argument where I hope the council will see fit to revise its policies, the city’s policies, in this matter. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don’t have much to report. I just looked through all my calendars, and all my meetings are coming up this week, all my government meetings. But I would like to recognize a member of our community that passed away last weekend. Many of you may have known Bob Bledsoe. He and his wife Barbara were San Carlos Citizens of the Year a couple of years ago. And he is past president of the San Carlos Villagers. He was a 60-year member of the Peninsula Masonic Lodge. He was also a police officer for the city of San Carlos. He was even a Devil’s Canyon Beer Club member. But Bob was the president for a long time of the San Carlos History Museum, and if any of you have been over to that museum, over by the fire station, Bob’s imprint is all over it. Anyway, he was just a treasure of the city, and I’d just like to ask that maybe we adjourn tonight’s meeting in his honor. And other than that, I don’t have any other items.
Sorry, Ron.
It’s all right.
Thank you. I missed the last piece, obviously.
The last piece, as I was hoping that we would adjourn tonight’s meeting in the honor of Bob Bledsoe.
Yeah, I think that’s a great idea. Absolutely. Thank you.
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, Councilmember Collins, I apologize for any—
All right. I’ll remember that, though.
I have just a couple of slides I wanted to share. I had an opportunity to talk to two different youth groups over the past two weeks. The first, I don’t have a photo of, was Troop 321, Boy Scout Troop in town. I had an opportunity to participate in one of their meetings and talk about the upcoming election and generally the role of elections and answer questions about how we do elections in San Carlos. And then on Friday, I got to meet with students from the Arbor Bay School, which, the Arbor Bay School is at the Quanis Building at Burton Park. They were an incredibly lively bunch. They all sat up in these seats. They turned on all the microphones simultaneously. They all talked simultaneously. But they had great questions and a lot of enthusiasm, so that was a lot of fun. I have been doing a monthly Ask the Mayor event at the farmer’s market, and this month, our Assemblyman Kevin Mullen came and joined me. I really appreciate everyone who came out. There were a lot of good questions, good feedback, and we’ll be following up with everybody who had a question, and appreciate Tara for helping to staff the booth this weekend. And then I want to give a shout-out to Bob Briddell, who’s been organizing an event in town called San Carlos Treasure Hunters for the last 11 years. It’s a really wonderful event. I had the opportunity to do the countdown, ready, set, go. It started at Casa de Flores, and over 1,800 kids have now been through this program. They get really enthusiastic, they put on costumes, and they go through a scavenger hunt all throughout San Carlos. They learn a lot of San Carlos history, and it’s just a wonderful event. And Bob does this voluntarily, out of the goodness of his heart, and he’s done a great job, so we really appreciate him. I’ve had a couple of people reach out to me over the last few months about homelessness issues, and the cost of housing in the county is a big issue. I spent a bit of time on Friday trying to learn more about this issue. In the morning, I went to the Samaritan House Safe Harbor Shelter, which is near the airport in South San Francisco. Bob used to be on the board of Samaritan House and got an opportunity to tour their shelter, which is a 90-bed homeless shelter. They do an amazing job. They provide outstanding services. The shelter is full. Some of the people that are there are working full-time and can’t afford it or can’t find a place to live affordably and are staying there. And then, I had a question just about homelessness in San Carlos, and how big is the issue? Because occasionally, people reach out to us and they talk about homeless encampments. I’m not sure that most people know that there, recently, about 18 months ago, the Sheriff’s Department established a unit called the Psych Emergency Response Team, and they serve the entire sheriff’s office area. But they’re based here in San Carlos, and it’s made up of one police officer who’s trained in psychological evaluation and dealing with people with mental illness, and then with a clinician. And so I actually went out with them. It’s this gentleman named Officer Jim Kaufman, and we went to every homeless encampment that there is in San Carlos. There’s about seven of them. None of them are permanent. They kind of move on from time to time. We had an opportunity to talk to three different people who are living out there in different parts of San Carlos, including this one woman. And I really don’t have much to report from a policy perspective, because I think they’re doing an outstanding job. Everybody is out, they’re getting regular service, the cops know where they are. If there’s any kind of specific law enforcement issues, they’re very responsive to it. And they’ve done a good job, and Jim showed me some cases where there had been some bad encampments, and they’ve been cleaned up. So I only bring this up today to say it was something that I went out and researched and learned a bit about. There are probably about 12 or so homeless people living in San Carlos, and it goes up and down over time. But they are receiving really great service. And in the case of this one woman, she said she was ready to kind of move on and get into the shelter, and they said they’re going to follow back up next week with her, so hopefully there’ll be a good outcome. And then I thought Councilman Collins said it well about Bob, even though—I’m sorry I was not completely listening to you—but I had a chance to meet Bob on a number of occasions. He was always a gentleman, and he will be sorely missed. He, as Ron may have mentioned, was the recipient of the Citizen of the Year Award in 2014, and so our condolences to his family, and we will definitely adjourn the meeting tonight in his memory. Okay. So we will move on to, well, to item 5B, staff comments on city administrative business. Mr. Malpe?
I have no comments this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Excellent. Okay, we have three presentations tonight. Our first presentation is a recognition of some of our citizens who’ve really done some outstanding work on behalf of our community. And our late mayor, Omar Ahmad, established an award for residents who do great deeds on behalf of the community. We created a city coin. We give it out to people who’ve made great contributions. And so tonight, we’re recognizing Karen Molinari, Don Brozek, Jean Dana, and Meredith Park for their work over the last two years to lobby and to bring a new bus line, Sam Trans Line 61, to the city of San Carlos, and not only to get that bus line put in, but then to make it as big of a success as it has. So I came to know this issue, I think, through Meredith or maybe through Jean, probably about a year or more after they had already started working on it. But, as many people may remember, we used to have a public transportation service in San Carlos called Scoot, which was a free shuttle operated by the city of San Carlos that ultimately proved not to be financially viable, and we phased it out. When I was running for city council, everybody said, like they do on many issues, “Hey, we should bring back Scoot. We should bring back Scoot. You ought to bring back Scoot,” or “We ought to do something to provide more public transportation in San Carlos.” And with a lot of issues, people, a lot of times, there’s a lot of talk, and they look for somebody else to do something. But it’s in those rare cases where people say, “I’m going to dedicate significant amounts of my personal time on a volunteer basis to try to make this thing a reality.” And if there ever was a case of that, it was Line 61. And so I had an opportunity to attend numerous meetings with Meredith, Don, and Jean and Karen, both at Sam Trans, and throughout the community, talking about this issue. And they basically said repeatedly that they were not going to take no for an answer. They pushed and talked to whoever they could, whether it was the school district, the high school district, the Sam Trans Board, Sam Trans staff, city staff, the city council, and so on. And even when we had serious pushback from Sam Trans, saying, “Hey, there’s no money. There’s no way we can do it. We can’t do it this year,” they wouldn’t take no for an answer, and they pushed it through. I didn’t think that we were going to get it done this year. At a certain point, we were saying, “Well, maybe we should try for 2017, because it looks like these guys aren’t going to go for it,” but they were just super persistent, so much so that now I have council members from other cities asking me, “How did you guys get this bus line?” And they say that they’re reaching out to Meredith in particular as a model for, “How do you do citizen advocacy for public transportation in neighboring cities?” And then, just to tie a bow on this, well, two other points. The other thing that I love about this is that not only did they want, they fought to get the policy and to get the bus, but they didn’t stop there. They went to the schools, they tabled during back-to-school night, they said they wanted the people to actually use it. So it wasn’t just about the policy victory, it was about making it real for people. The results have been outstanding, so much so that Sam Trans has had to add more buses and adjust times because too many kids have been taking it. The only feedback that I get about Sam Trans Line 61 is that there isn’t any room to sit because so many kids are taking it. And so it’s had an impact, not only on the lives of families, because kids can get to school, and the lives of their kids, because they get some agency self-responsibility. They also get to hang out with their friends more often. But then all the people that transit through that corridor have had hundreds of cars taken off the road. So it’s had a huge impact. I mean, arguably, one of our biggest victories for the city this year. But then, just last Friday, even though we’ve had this huge victory, I went to Pete’s in the morning to pick up some coffee, and I walk out and I see Meredith sitting at Pete’s with the Sam Trans staff advocating for the next bus line. So I mean, I think if all of us had the tenacity and the dedication, I mean, we could accomplish a lot. So really, this is a recognition, both of thanks on behalf of the citizens, on behalf of the residents, on behalf of the city, for all of your hard work. But it’s also a way to recognize you so that other people see and can learn from the good work that you’ve done. And I think that the lesson here is, if you see something that you want changed, you can absolutely do it. It just takes a tremendous amount of hard work. So on behalf of a grateful city, to Meredith, Jean, Don, and Karen, I want to present you guys with our city coin. So thank you.
[applause] [inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
Well, I just wanted to thank you for recognizing all of our work. It really has been a pleasure advocating with these three women over the past few years. It really, truly reinforces the belief that one person can make a difference, and if you grab a few friends to join you, it’s all the more fun. I also want to thank each council member for understanding the importance of funding the school crossing guards, which really helped ensure the success of us encouraging people to take alternate routes to school, whether they walk, bike, scooter, or ride the bus. The crossing guards were a pivotal key to that success, and so I really, really appreciate each council member voting to support that effort and to share the funding of that with the school district. Our crossing guard at Dartmouth and San Carlos Avenue, I’ve said numerous times, he is such an amazing person. He knows every student’s name. He cajole smiles out of grumpy high schoolers in the morning, and he really has become a beloved member of our community, so we really greatly appreciate his presence. I especially want to thank Mayor Johnson and Councilmember Olbert for all of their help and support, and of course, dedicated city staff with all of the city-school two-by-two meetings and meetings with the transit agency. This would not have been a success without your support behind us, so we greatly appreciate that. This truly was a collaborative effort, as I said. We had some concerned citizens, we got elected officials, we got the city and the staff, we got the school district, and we have Robert Porter from the school district here, who his staff was amazing in helping us stay focused and on course and really completing things. Each agency staff worked so hard, and we just really, really appreciate all of your efforts in helping us make this a reality. I do want to acknowledge our families that are here, because they put up with countless evening meetings, many of them we dragged the kids to, so we wouldn’t have been successful without their support as well. So thank you again. [applause] And just to echo Karen’s comments on our deep appreciation and gratitude to all of you for all of your support. And one thing I just have noticed, as I have received, and I know our team has received so many thank-yous from the community, and I don’t think there’s any better recognition than knowing what a service this has been to the kids, to the families. There are so many working parents in this community now, because, as we know, it costs a lot of money to afford a house here. And as you can see, I’m not done with my work. I’m still rallying to rebuild the entire old network, so wish us luck. [applause]
Do you guys like to say any further words? I know we have Councilmember Doug Kim, who’s also the chief planner for Sam Trans, who was here and wanted to say a couple of words. Come on up, Doug.
Thank you, council members. Really here wearing two hats. First, on behalf of the Belmont City Council, wanted to continue to thank the council and staff for its leadership on the Four Corners process. The new bus service that these four young ladies have helped institute are a huge part of a three-pronged program to tackle traffic, and it’s working. On behalf of Sam Trans, as the head of bus planning, I appreciate the fact that Sam Trans is often looked at as the guys in the black hats, and I’d prefer to not characterize us as saying no initially, but I think we were concerned. And I’ll give you a little bit of historical perspective, because everything the mayor said is absolutely correct about the efforts of these four women. I’ve been in the transportation business for almost 30 years, and one absolute truth is that well-meaning members of the public, of communities, really believe that their people will take the bus if you provide it. And nine times out of 10, after opening day, we don’t see riders. And in this case, on opening day, we saw packed buses. You have to understand, in the bus business, when we get a bus that’s two-thirds full, there’s dancing in the streets. That’s the point at which bus transit starts to begin to break even. From day one, we saw bus after bus full, not only with every seat occupied, but with standing room only in the aisles. And I think, as the mayor has said, we’re seeing an average of 60 to 70 kids on a bus. That is absolutely unprecedented. It just doesn’t happen. And that, by our estimates, is taking anywhere from 300 to 400 car trips off the roads of San Carlos and Belmont, to some extent, every day. I mean, think about hundreds of cars coming off the road. In our professional lives, if we can reduce 30 or 40 cars off the road, you start to notice it, but 300 to 400 is absolutely unprecedented. So it is a reminder that when you see things working in a city like this, like bus service, it doesn’t come accidentally. And I can absolutely vouch for everything the mayor said. Other cities are contacting these women. They want to know what the secret sauce is, and we’d prefer that you kept it to yourself for the time being, because we are running out of money. But I wanted to thank again the city, leadership, staff, and the community for stepping up and really making history.
All right. Thank you, Doug. [applause] Mark, you want to say?
Yes, just briefly, two things. One is, it was a pleasure working with all of you again, in some cases, for a first time, and others. And you did all the heavy lifting, so I thought that was great. And the other comment I want to make, just so folks are aware of it, is Meredith doesn’t even live in San Carlos. So Meredith, there’s always room for one more. When you see your way to coming up this way, just don’t go too far north. You’ll end up in Doug’s area, and we don’t want you to do that, okay? But you’re a wonderful asset to our community, even though you’re sort of not even part of the community. You’re part of it because you choose to be and make a difference, and that’s great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Can we get one more quick round of applause to say thanks? [applause] Okay. We will move on with our agenda to item 5B, receiving a presentation from Starship Technologies on their Personal Delivery Device Pilot Program. Bring on the robots. Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Henry Harris Burland, and I’m the Marketing and Communications Manager for Starship Technologies. I’m here with a couple of my colleagues. I’m here with Alan Martenson, our chief operating officer there, Jeff from our law firm, and two of our robot handlers. These people look after our robots, Daniel and Kayla at the back. And this is our Starship delivery robot, and really excited to be here. Thank you very much. And I just want to talk to you a bit about what we’d love to do with the city of San Carlos and a little bit more information about the company. So Starship Technologies, we are fundamentally aiming to change the way that we send and receive goods to each other, and that is why we’ve built the world’s first delivery robot. And it’s an autonomous delivery robot, and there’s no other such thing in the world right now, so it’s quite cool. It delivers groceries, parcels, and food. So for me, for example, it’s my pizza on a Friday night, or something like that. And it’s a pedestrian robot, so it doesn’t go on roads. It’s very safe and secure. It matches pedestrian speeds on sidewalks. It goes a maximum of four miles an hour. And it’s 99% autonomous, so we don’t want 100% autonomous, say like a self-driving car, for example. We always want an element of human oversight, or an element of human control. If anything was to happen to our cute little robot, a human can always take over, which is very important to us. Now, the robot, from the ground up, has been built with safety in mind, which is incredibly important to us. And it’s got a very sophisticated sensor suite, so it’s got obstacle detection, which is like a bubble of awareness around the robot, and this obviously stops it from bumping into anything, which is very important on sidewalks. And our ultimate aim is to provide on-demand delivery for a dollar. So this is currently completely unheard of in the current industry, on-demand delivery for a dollar, and within 15 to 30 minutes. Now, this is not possible at the moment, and that is really what we’re aiming to do, which would be a fantastic achievement. Now, obviously, delivery and local delivery is a huge industry, but the founders of the company are very used to disrupting these huge trillion-dollar industries. The founders of the company actually founded Skype. Now, the company, Starship Technologies, is two and a half years old now, and we’ve been testing this robot on the streets for a year now. So it’s really important to note that this isn’t just a toy, even though it may look a bit like one. But this is actually doing real deliveries every single day in three countries already. Now, we're aiming, ideally, that San Carlos might become another one of these cities. But right now, we have 80 employees based between Europe and the United States. And confidentially, I can say that we're really excited about this, that we are just closing a round of investment from lots of VCs. So, we're in a really perfect place right now to move this forward, and we're super excited about it. Now, in terms of how is this relevant for a city like, like yours, and how is this actually going to transform anything? What's it going to change? I like to compare it to how broadband changed and replaced dial-up with internet, how everything suddenly became instant, how it changed the way we use the internet. Delivery robots can do the same thing. What we aim to do is make delivery almost instant, and seamless, and efficient, and convenient for us as residents. And that's not possible right now. It's incredibly inconvenient, say least. And a problem facing the city, and it's been mentioned here already this evening, so it's very relevant, is congestion. Now, I use an example where I would be buying a pair of shoes online, maybe some clothes or a t-shirt or something like that. A five-ton truck pulls outside of my house at the moment, delivering my one kilogram or two-pound parcel. Now, it doesn't really make any sense. Most of the time as well, I'll be at work, and they'll chuck it over my fence, or leave it on my doorstep, or whatever the case may be. So, we're aiming to change that by reducing congestion, reducing the pollution, e-commerce in general. People like me are ordering more and more, and more and more things online. So, all it means right now is more and more cars, more and more vans. So, something drastic has to change in order to confront this problem. And our delivery robot can do exactly that. Now, convenience is a huge factor for us as, as not just businesses, but also consumers. Now, speaking for myself, I have many missed delivery slips through my door when I'm at work. I'm at work every single day of the week, give or take, so they can't deliver to my house. They chuck parcels over my fence, they may leave parcels on my door. Sometimes I will be waiting around at home in a long delivery window. It's incredibly inconvenient. We want to change all of that by making it on-demand. So, this little cute robot would turn up at your house only when you've called it. So, it won't just turn up unexpected when you're not at home. Now, one really, really important point to us that we found with our testing in Europe has been assisting senior citizens, and assisting the less able. Now, a lot of senior citizens that we've found that we've been working with in, in Europe, they are reliant on public transport. They might be reliant on friends and family to get their groceries, or get their food. They may not be able to carry their bags back from the shops. Now, this robot can deliver their groceries, can deliver their food, to their door, and it can, and it can give them their power back. It can even give them a little bit longer in their homes, and that's obviously absolutely invaluable. And we've found really huge success already in assisting senior citizens with the countries that we've already been working in. Now, affordability, affordable delivery for local businesses. Now, we want to empower local businesses in the city of San Carlos with offering this local delivery service. Now, bakeries, cafes, and things like that can't deliver a cup of coffee and a croissant right now, because it's completely cost prohibitive. It doesn't make sense. But if you can offer delivery for $1, then it opens up this wealth of opportunity for all these local businesses in the local area to actually get on a level footing with those bigger companies. And that really excites us, and we've already seen a lot of success with this in the other countries that we're working in. And I am very biased, but I think it's, it's pretty cool. Now, as I was saying, this isn't just something that's going to be around in three years' time, and, and a lot of people think, they may look at this robot and think, oh, that's cool, I'll, I'll see it in five years. Now, that's really not true. This robot is, we've done 11,000 miles of testing around the world. We've been to 16 countries, testing 56 cities. Now, we're doing daily robotic deliveries, as I said, in four cities now, already, and we're looking to expand that. And that's one of the reasons why I'm here to talk to you. Most importantly, zero accidents. Safety is inherently built into this robot. It is the most important thing to us. This robot, of course, has to be welcomed by humans. It's a social robot. It has to interact with humans, and it has to be loved, it has to be wanted. And we've found some fascinating things out of the 1.7 million people that this robot has now met. And I was incredibly surprised by this. As it says on the slide, the majority of people actually ignore this robot. Now, I, working for the company, was quite offended by this when I first started. I wanted people to be crowding around the robot and taking pictures and things like that. In reality, it's actually incredibly, incredibly successful that they don't, because it needs to be invisible and seamless. It needs to just go about and interact and integrate into our daily lives. So, that's been a huge success. Now, it's not only human acceptance, we also have animal acceptance. This is not Photoshop, I promise. And this was actually in, I think this was in London, and we just got that shot, which was quite funny. Anyway, jokes aside, now, we have been operating in Europe, but now it's time to launch in the most important country in the world, the United States. Now, we are wanting to operate in two cities in the U.S. in November. One of them will be in Washington, D.C., where we have the Personal Delivery Device Act, and we'd be looking to replicate the same thing in a city, hopefully, like San Carlos. And what we want to be doing is we want to be doing real deliveries to real local residents in the area, where we put sort of 10, 15, 20 robots into the neighborhood and start operating, so everyone can have the benefits straight away. Now, we know, we're not here for no reason. We, we've done our research into, into San Carlos, and we know that a lot of the local residents and, and council members are very innovative and forward-thinking, and embracing of, of new technology. Now, we just would love to work with you guys. We, we want to work with the city of San Carlos, introducing this, introducing this technology. We want to offer the benefits to the local residents, and you would be the first, or you'd be the second city in the entire of the United States to actually have access to this technology. Now, of course, it would be fantastic PR and media for everybody involved. I've seen this in Europe. But more importantly, it's about having access to this technology and witnessing the benefits for ourselves. That's most important. Now, our request, quite simply, is that we would love to have a pilot approved in the city of San Carlos with our delivery robot. We have some, a template of some framework that we can share with you, and this was from our Washington, D.C. operation, and it's things like weight and size and speed on the sidewalks, and parameters and boundaries of this pilot that we would then agree. And I'm hoping we, we would come to some progress there. So, thank you so much for having us here. Really, really appreciate it. And we'd love to follow up, maybe towards the end of the week, or vice versa, to discuss this in more detail. Thank you so much for having us here. We really appreciate it, and we'd love to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Ron, questions?
I just have one question. If I give you my address, can you send it to Baskin Robbins?
Absolutely. When do they close?[1023.25][1023.25](LAUGHTER).
Mark.
Good presentation. Interesting device. My questions actually are for staff, Jeff and Greg. Have you had an opportunity to, on the one hand, review the template language of what we'd have to be adopting? And I guess beyond that, have you, has staff had an opportunity to do any review or analysis of, I don't know, liability exposure, all sorts of other issues like that?
Councilmember Olbert, no, we have not yet. I think the idea was to see the presentation and get some general direction from staff and from the council. And if we get some direction, we can start talking with them. And then, it may need to come back to the council, I'm not sure, because of the nature of this type of agreement, but I would imagine it would come back to you for, for a final approval later.
Okay. And one question for you, sir. I guess what I'm wondering is, what other types of cities are in the running to be your second city in the U.S.? I mean, because I, I love to hear that we are in the same category as Washington, D.C., but I have to admit that was a little, sort of the scale issue kind of got me there. So, who else is in the running, and what kind of, what kinds of cities are you looking for?
So, we are aiming for East Coast and West Coast. So, there's other peninsula cities that we're, we're talking with. However, this is our first city council meeting, and this is the first time the robot's been in a city council meeting. So, this is very special for us. Other cities which are very unlikely to be the first, but are other cities that we're looking at, are places like Portland, Seattle, Atlanta, Austin, Texas, places like that. But they will not be the first. So, it is very, very likely, in, in an ideal world for us, that it would be a city on the peninsula that would be the second U.S. city.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. Bob?
I have a million questions, but I'm not going to ask you tonight. It's fascinating. I would hope staff would, would, seriously, and of course, I'm the techie on the, on the board here.[1168.65][1168.65](LAUGHTER). You don't know that that's a joke, but anyway.[1173.58][1173.58](LAUGHTER). As I tell people, I'm from the last century. But anyway, seriously, this seems like a very intriguing thing that, that might be. I, I will be fascinated to see how we can get up Britton Avenue or Crestview, where I live, but, on the hills. But other than that, I think it's a great idea, and I would hope that we would try to look at it and hopefully make a situation. It's fascinating, absolutely fascinating.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? I had an opportunity to have a phone call with these gentlemen, so I had an opportunity to ask a lot of questions. Is there any objection to staff looking into it and coming back with some more information?
Yeah, I, I'd actually like, I mean, the premise of my question was, I'd actually like staff to look into it, because before I could make, and this is no reflection on your organization, before I could possibly make a decision on that, I'd want to see that kind of analysis done.
Yeah, great. Okay, cool. Well, please follow up with our staff, and we'll be talking soon. And thanks for the presentation and showing us your cool robot.
Thank you very much, everyone.[1234.11][1234.11](APPLAUSE).
Okay. We'll now move on to Item 5C, receiving a presentation on PG&E Line 147 construction activities.[1254.51][1254.51](LAUGHTER).
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Bill Chang, your local PG&E Public Affairs rep. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity to, for us to give you a quick update on what's going on with Line 147. And before, before I get into it, I just want to make the pledge that we'll modify our traffic control plans for your upcoming robot.[1279.24][1279.24](LAUGHTER). I'm not sure how to, ah, here it is. So, very quickly, I'm going to, I'm going to set up the framework, and then I'm going to bring up my, my aid team here with, with Jeff Jambeer, Benny Barnes, and Christine Collins behind me to, to give you the meat of the presentation. As, as you, as you all know, the Line 147, the long-awaited inline inspection of Line 147 was, was completed earlier this year. And after about 60 or 90 days after the completion of the, the data was gathered, the analysis of the, of the data was complete. That data analysis was shared with the city, and along with that data analysis and a few other data packets of information, PG&E created a, a dig plan to look at the, the line in its entirety in certain locations, as identified through the inline inspection process, as well as other pieces of information. And so, the, the dig plan was initiated last week. We mobilized crews on October 12th, and we are right in the middle of beginning to work on two of the sites. There's a total of nine or 10 sites that are on the map that you will see. I'll put it to the next slide. There are nine or 10 sites, but not all of them are, are, how should I say, are guaranteed dig sites. Some of them are conditional, depending on what we may or may not find in the previous locations. So, with that, I'm going to bring up Benny Barnes, one of our senior engineers on pipeline safety.
Good evening. Hello, I'm Benny Barnes, Chief Engineer over the Integrity Management Group. So, Bill covered most of it, and, and before I start, though, let me, let me just say thank you for taking some time, councilmembers, to, to receive this update. And I'm also very humbled, because following the SAM Trans and the Starship work, I, some pretty amazing change that's going on there, and I, and I, I'm very humbled by, by what I saw there. That's just incredible work. So, I just want to start out first, reiterate a few things that Bill said. We, we are in the, he, he mentioned that we've already received all of the data back. We've put dig plans together. And I wanted to reemphasize that, that we are operating that pipeline in the safest manner possible. The, the pipeline itself is actually rated at a maximum allowable operating pressure of 330 PSI. We actually are operating that line right now at 60 PSI, in an abundance of caution, while we undertake this dig planning and dig activity. So, I just wanted to reemphasize that, that we, we are operating this in a very safe manner, in an abundance of caution, while we do this exploration. So, and of course, you may notice now that, as we've undertaken this work, that there's quite a bit of activity going on up and down Britton Avenue. We, we are conducting those excavations, and we're performing an assessment of each of the dig sites. As we go through this process, we, we do know that gas service should not be interrupted. We already have the, the line down at a very low pressure. And as such, the, we are operating in a manner that, that we should not see service outages in the system. We are working crews Monday through Friday during normal working hours. Generally, what that means is from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. No intention to work on Saturdays at this point. It would be a very rare emergency when that would occur. So, that is the plan, is to work Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. All work areas are clearly flagged and marked, and, and we will have traffic flaggers on-site to help direct traffic. The map that you have up there shows, shows the locations. We're actually working two crews so that we can expeditiously accomplish this work. The, the two crews right now are working first on Sites 7 and 8 in the upper right-hand corner of that map. And at the same time, we have crews working at Sites 10 and 11 on that map. As, as we finish those two different sites, we will have crews shift to, to Site 9, and then to Sites 4 and 5, down on the lower end of the map. Bill mentioned already that the project was mobilized on October 12th, and we've, we've begun that work. We have closely been coordinating with the city with, with Greg, and Jeff, and Jay, and Tara, and they've, they've been a great help in trying to navigate this process. So, I appreciate their help in that process. The, the, we are about to begin, so up until this point, what we've been doing is site excavations and clearing the sites to get ready to actually examine the pipe. We are about to begin those investigative assessments, and we'll be working with the city inspection. There likely will be two sites that will occur by Friday of this week, so we'll be communicating those to, to Jay as we identify those sites. Pending field conditions, such as weather and so forth, potential repairs and that sort of thing, we are planning the, all of this work to be completed by December of this year, with our local customer experience people leading this, as they have, and they will continue to do that. Bill, Bill, I think, has been doing a great job communicating with the city and, and keeping the city engaged in this. So, just, that was really just a very quick and dirty update, and high-level update. We will be coming back after we complete this work to actually discuss and make a better presentation in regards to what exactly were we finding, what exactly the plans are associated with that pipeline, and the, the increases in pressure and returning back to the maximum allowable pressure. At this time, we don't have that plan in place until we've, until we've completed this work. So, that's pretty much it. I want to thank you for the opportunity again, councilmembers, for providing an update, and we'll be back again when we have further details to report.
All right. Jeff, I see your light is on. Did you want to share some comments?
I did, just very quickly, Mr. Mayor. As the councils are aware, when the city began working on this issue several years ago, the council wanted to hire their own pipeline engineering expert. We hired Dr. Glenn Stevic from Bear Engineering and Research out of UC Berkeley. And we've had an opportunity to work with Dr. Stevic on the findings from the testing that was done on Line 147. And we'll have a more robust report when we come back, and we, and we kind of begin to wrap this up after the repairs are made. But I wanted the council and the public to know that the, our expert has already done an assessment of the data, and has concluded that the areas, the sections that PG&E has identified for repair are, in fact, in his interpretation of the data, the right sections to be looking at, and that, in fact, there are no other sections of the pipe that he feels are necessary to be looked at or repaired right now. And that's using more conservative review standards than are required under the current regulatory scheme for PG&E to use. So, they're taking a conservative approach. Our expert agrees that that's the right approach as we move forward. So, unless there are any real-world, you know, surprises as they dig up the pipe and find anything new, we feel like the path that PG&E is on right now is the right path to ensure that Line 147 is made safe in our community before it begins to be considered to be operated under its full pressure.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Bob, you had some questions?
Bill, if, when the, the work is done, is there an estimated time when you would give, come back and and give us the assessment?
We can come back when we finish. Not on the map, there is one more site that is outside city limits. We call it Site 6. Excuse me. Its location is, you know where Edgewood Road meets 280? There's that parking ride lot? Just north of that lot is Site 6, and that's SFPUC property.
Well, in other words, but again, getting back, just assuming that didn't exist, if you're finished in December, when would you have a report to come back to us for the assessment of what was done?
I believe we spoke with staff and we said we could be back in January.
Okay, so about a month, anyway, 30, 40 days? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First question is sort of both for staff and PG&E. Jeff, I was gratified to hear that Stevic had confirmed the analysis. Do we, is there some sense of what the future testing regimen would be for this line? Because frankly, one of the things that I've sensed has evolved over time is, you know, it used to be hydraulic testing was the holy grail, and then that's sort of not the holy grail anymore, and other kinds of testing are. That's fine. I'm not the technical expert. I'd just like to know what the program is. I don't know if that's PG&E or staff.
Benny can speak to that, yeah.
Thank you. So I recognize we've been in and around here for a while. And I, so we are doing, of course, all of that in the name of safety. What we've done, though, is that when you look at integrity management regulations and what is required by integrity management regulations under the Code of Federal Regulations, which is also what California covers under GO-112, is the requirement to perform a threat analysis, then perform a risk analysis, and then actually undertake an integrity assessment regime in high-consequence areas. And that requirement actually establishes three different methodologies for integrity assessments that are done on a frequency typically no longer than seven years. So it really is based on the threat analysis and what threats exist on the pipeline as to what methodology you will need to use for the integrity assessments that follow. So generally speaking, and I wanted to put that little context in it, because generally speaking, what we would be looking at is no more than seven years, coming back and performing a reassessment. And based on the threat assessment that we do leading up to that, we'll make a determination whether the next assessment is a hydrostatic test or whether it is an inline inspection. Likely will be an inline inspection, but I can't 100% confirm that until we become, until we come close to that time period as we do our threat assessments.
Okay. I appreciate that, Benny. For what it's worth, I personally am not going to be satisfied if it's not some kind of inline inspection for the simple reason that the other inspections didn't show all these things that we're going to, you guys are repairing. Okay? So it's always good to have processes, but it's always good to sort of check them out against real world. The, you know, I've said many times over the course of our experience with line 147, when residents would ask me to give them my assessment of the situation, I always said, hopefully what we're going to find when all the work is properly done is that we had nothing to worry about. And whether we had anything to worry about or not, clearly after these repairs, as Jeff said, we will be in a much safer position. And I think that's great. And I appreciate PG&E doing the right thing and doing that. But I also want to recognize something. Benny, you mentioned in your introductory remarks, you talked about you had a sense of humility, you felt humble about some of the earlier presentations. I was glad to hear that for a lot of reasons. Frankly, to be quite honest, I actually think an earlier expression of that kind of humility on the part of PG&E would have saved us an awful lot of trouble. And, you know, it's the unknown unknowns that cause problems. And I don't want to look back, I want to look forward, but I really strongly encourage the organization to use this as a learning experience and remember that transparency is important, not just for governmental agencies, but it's also really important for utilities that operate high-pressure gas pipelines running through communities. So I appreciate your efforts and thank you for getting this done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. I just had one question for both city staff and PG&E. What kind of public outreach has there been for the people that live near these excavation sites? Have they been contacted? Have they been told that a pipeline is going to be inspected near their home?
Absolutely. We sent letters, there were phone calls, and then we had a team actually go out and knock on doors before, well before the excavation started, as well as electronic traffic signs too, especially on traffic on Britton Avenue, because we recognize that not everybody driving on Britton lives in San Carlos or lives nearby. And so we did a full-on notifications.
Sure, okay.
We also sent city staff maps and language for your website.
That's good to hear. Jeff, I know you are well aware of this, but the people on, right above Alameda on Britton have just been slammed. They've had now three consecutive projects in a row, and I think there's some very frayed nerves up there, and I don't blame them. So whatever we can do to kind of expedite in a safe manner this project and also to explain as best we can why these things are necessary. So Ron, you had a question?
Yes, I did, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I don't think, I don't remember if I heard it in the presentation, but are there any remote sensors in place in any of the lines to notify PG&E if there's some potential issues, if there's a weakness or a stress developing, that sort of thing?
Before I bring up Jeff or Benny, this is an opportunity for me to mention PG&E's relatively brand-new, state-of-the-art gas control center out in San Ramon. From that center, which can be best described as looking like NASA mission control, we can monitor in real-time the entire gas operating system in the city of California. From that center, we can notice everything from a minor pressure drop to something wrong with the pipe almost immediately. And so with that, let me bring up either Jeff or Benny.
And that's something that's been developed since San Bruno?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Bill. I mean, I want to add something to what Bill is saying. So on this line and all of PG&E's pipelines, we've actually undertaken something else. But before I get to that something else, I just wanted to kind of lay some framework, is that the pipeline and the monitoring that's happening in the gas control really does have a de facto monitoring of the stresses, the operating stresses associated with the pipeline. So that process does a really fantastic job at this point of monitoring it. Plus, we have automated valves that can respond to and react to any releases that occur as well. The one thing I wanted to add to that is that we actually use something called LiDAR, and that LiDAR actually monitors land movement. And that land movement piece is really associated with, not the quick landslide activities that we typically think about, but it's really kind of monitoring very slow creep land movement. And so in the process of evaluating line 147, we've, and when we ran the inline inspection tool, we're also looking at bending strain analysis on the pipeline. And that bending strain and the changes to that strain are very important to monitor as well. So we not only monitor through the gas control centers, the actual pipeline pressures and the stresses that that puts on the pipe, but we're also monitoring changes related to bending moments that happen on the pipeline to make sure that that line continues to remain safe. So those are the two things that we do.
So, well, that brings up a good question. What about sudden movement like a 7.0 earthquake? Does that trigger an automatic shutdown of several lines at once? Or just lines affected?
So if there's a line that goes out of service because of a break due to something like an earthquake, we actually have line break valves, and those are the automated valves that I mentioned. So if there is a sudden release, sudden pressure drop, those valves will close.
Automatically, without having to be directed by someone at a remote facility?
They actually are set up right now as a remote control valve, and they are monitored in the gas control facility. The gas control facility actually has two sister facilities, so there is a complete and duplicate backup of that system in the event that we have an issue like this.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions, thank you, gentlemen. And we will move on to item six, public comment for items that are not on the agenda. I have a number of speaker cards here. I would ask that you confine your comments to two minutes. Our first speaker tonight is Lois Giannoni, followed by Vesna Abradovic. Good evening.
Hello, thank you. I've talked to you before and sent an email. I'm here to talk about the sidewalk repair program. And I mentioned that I was kind of taken advantage of by the construction company when I asked them if they were going to start on a certain day in September, and they said no. And I said, "Good," because I need to talk to Public Works about the plan. And when I came home that night, all the sidewalk had been removed. But I'm thinking maybe that robot could be used to oversee the project. From what I've noticed, there is no oversight. I just wanted to show you a couple of things. And unfortunately, I'm kind of like Bob, I'm low-tech. This is my presentation. I don't know if you can see this, but that's the mess in front of my house at the start. Just one small area of mess. This is some of the mess afterwards. So today, it sort of looks like that. And there's still drops all in front of my driveway. Looks like paint drips all over the place. And in the brochure, it talked about cutting and shaving the sidewalk at $20 to $50 a square versus replacement at $300 a square. And I have pictures showing the squares that I took before they were repaired that have no cracks or anything, yet they were replaced. So I have four of these. That's like $1,200 compared to, what, $200? Four of those. And there were a couple of squares that were never marked at all that were replaced. Oh, here's another lovely picture of mess. I'll show you the ones that were replaced. Okay, so here's a mark on the right and the left. The center square is not designated for repair or replacement because there's nothing wrong with it. And all three of the squares have been replaced. And I know the estimate said the, it'll be plus or minus 10%. What do you think's going to happen? I'm probably going to get the plus 10% on the bill. And then Jay Walters, the Public Works guy, said that the utilities have to pay for the squares they're responsible for. So this is the before picture of the cable box that apparently has been broken by being open and closed over the years. I've never opened and closed it. And this is the picture afterwards. He also said a quarter-inch crack would need to be repaired. So that's afterwards. It's in between all my replaced squares. Looks exactly the same. They didn't do a thing with it. And so I just want to implore you to consider sharing the costs. I'm unfortunate enough to live on a very large corner lot. And then the corner down the street...
I apologize. You're well over time. If I could have you just wrap up, please.
Okay. Some of theirs weren't repaired at all in between some of the replacements. So if you look at mine with no cracks, and then these cracks weren't repaired, it's just a very haphazard project. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vesna Abradovic, followed by Lorraine Letterer. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I was here last week, and I listened to the discussion about the sidewalk repairs. The commissioners were very receptive, listened to the homeowners, and had some good suggestions. In my opinion, the homeowner should be completely taken out of the sidewalk repair process. This is why. Unless the city can prove that the citizen is directly responsible for the damage, the city should not spend any time involving the homeowners in this process. How many city employees' hours are spent on administration and coordination, contacting, informing, writing letters, answering calls, and then more calls, complaints, responding to letters, reviewing each and every location separately, and being in the court, as we heard on Tuesday? It is a complete waste of time to even keep track of where the sidewalk repairs are in relationship to the homes. There's already three- to five-year backlog, so obviously this is not a good approach. This needs to be a city proactive 10- to 20-year plan. Take streets and blocks that are a priority and in organized fashion, make program to repair the sidewalks using the taxes that we already pay. We have already heard from the city engineer that you can't distinguish a small sidewalk issue from a two-inch vertical displacement. One is not a priority over the other. Both are tripping hazards. Renegotiate the contract with the sidewalk contractor. Get a price for each specific block for as many as the city can afford per year. It is easier to get competitive bids that way. If you're repairing a payment in one block, the contractor can plan the number of workers, the equipment, the needed material. All cars would be off the block, and productivity and price would be better. What is happening now, there are sporadic, unorganized repairs driven by anonymous tips and the contractor. The city needs to be fully in charge of this project and streamline it. Example, it is cheaper to change three windows in one house than to change one window in three houses that are six blocks apart. In addition, what are these sidewalks going to look like if the homeowners try to repair them themselves or use a handyman? Some homeowners did this. They may get by. But in majority of the cases, the city can easily reject these repairs as not compliant with the codes. Our sidewalks will not look uniform. There will be more cost to the homeowner and more time spent by the city. It is some hardship for some to pay. For others, it is not easy to find a qualified, good contractor to do this job. Cities should be covering these repairs. We all pay taxes, and we pay for schools, fire department, police, regardless of how much we use any of these services individually. 100% paid by homeowners is wrong, but please, let's not have a wasteful system that will tie up the city employees, harass the homeowners, and then say that we are saving them money by electing 50-50 participation. I don't think we are. System needs to be changed. And for record, I'm not affected personally by payment repairs in this case.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Lorraine Letterer, followed by Jack Vanderen. Good evening, Lorraine.
Good evening. I've done my homework again. Thank you for your time. When we approach a problem in the design field, we try to step up above the problem and just relook at it from a higher level. For the sidewalk program, that's what I'm speaking to tonight, I, it has been suggested that the city, the current program, which is 0-100 city homeowner split, a suggested 50-50 split, and a suggested 100-0 split. I looked at Jay Walters' description of the program on the website, and I identified how many contact steps, how many times the city staff has to take an action to make this program work. And I identified 31 steps that would be, that would happen, and many of these steps happen on each and every complaint or each and every fix. I identified, do any of these steps lessen or increase if it goes to 50-50? And there is no change. And then I looked at if it was 100% city-sponsored, the city responsibility, there are seven steps. So it's basically a decrease of 77% in time, which would be a much more efficient way to look at it. The second page I have before you shows the benefits, which was increases safety because you're being proactive, you're addressing spots, not sporadically, but many people, many spots are not being identified. And if you're looking at exposure, this would be better for the city. It maximizes efficiency, like Vesna mentioned. You can bundle projects. It cuts staff time. It lowers costs, again, because you can negotiate and you can clump jobs together and therefore lower costs. For common sense reasons, I don't believe that folks paying $20,000 and more in city property tax every year should also be asked to spend several thousand dollars to repair a public sidewalk. I also think that folks on a fixed income of $1,200 a month should be asked to pay two months' worth of their income for city repair, for the repair of public sidewalks. Homeowners have no ability to prevent the public from parking on their sidewalks. So some homeowners on narrow streets will have cracked sidewalks, not just once a year, but maybe once every year. Since we all pay into the general fund, and as Mark pointed out, the general fund is flush with money, and a 50-50 split makes very little dent, I would suggest that 100-0 flush with money, and a 50-50 split makes very little dent, I would suggest that 100-0 split would have, not even double, because you would have much more efficiency in managing the program. And like I said, it increases safety in the city, and that is the most prioritized. I would think that would be the priority and the goal. So that's it. Thank you.
Please.
Hey, I made it.
Thanks, Al. All right. Our next speaker is Jack Vanderen, followed by Jesse Montalvo. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I also wanted to briefly talk about the sidewalk problem. I got a bill for $3,500. I live on the corner of St. Francis Way and Cedar Street in a corner lot. All of the cracks and irregularities on my sidewalk were very minor. We live one block from an elementary school. We have young children walking on our sidewalk. We have scooters. We have baby carriages. There's never been an incident, since I've lived in that house for eight years, that there's any problem. I think, as far as I'm concerned, the issue with identifying all these minor cracks takes no account of the degree of hazard that these cracks involve. And as somebody said a few minutes ago, you know, if there was a two-inch gap or a concrete slab sticking up, that might be a considerable hazard. But if there's a quarter-inch gap or a half-inch gap, which is still completely level, I mean, that's practically no hazard whatsoever. And I think to address this whole sidewalk problem, as was discussed at the commission meeting last week, you really need to assess the overall problem in San Carlos and not focus on one neighborhood and take that as the worst example, because it probably isn't. So an overall assessment should be made by the city of the citywide problem, and the degree of hazard that's involved should also be taken into account. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jesse-- how do you say your name again, sir?
Jesse Montalvo.
Montalvo, followed by Dimitri Vandellis. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jesse Montalvo. I'm here for my mom. My mom actually lives up on Devonshire, which is a very busy street. I want to bring this up because there's also a lot of trucks, vehicles. There's a nice little stand, I call it a shop, actually, where people go get sandwiches. But the problem is, there's not enough space. And because of that, people park in my mother's driveway. They're halfway on the driveway, halfway out the driveway. There's so many cracks on it that it's all been because of construction. And literally, every other month, there's another company, whether it's PG&E, maybe it's the telephone company, maybe it's Comcast next week. So there are circumstances like this other gentleman that are out of our control. Perfect example, I live on Cedar Street. Two weeks before the school started, they decided to break cement, not tell anybody that they were going to break cement. Surprise! They actually broke the sprinkler systems of the two of the neighbors that live there. What I'm leading to is, there's hardship situations at hand, and there's also some situations where it's the environment that's the problem. It's not always the individual, as he mentioned, living nearby a school. It's out of his control. There's a lot of traffic. So there is some degree of consideration that needs to be thought out in this situation. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dimitri Vandellis, followed by Jason Mansfield. Good evening, Dimitri.
Council members, wanted to bring up a couple of things, to let you know that we had a recent community meeting of the GESC Neighborhood Association. All of the past presidents of L'Oreal and GESC Community Group were present, and the current GESC Board was reelected unanimously by the neighborhood. We had an unprecedented number of people volunteering to be street leads on critical issues. We're only missing one street right now for our neighborhood, so that's all really good news. And we're going to be holding quarterly neighborhood meetings, and we'll be inviting city council members to future ones. Looking forward to having you folks at future meetings. Also, another important thing to note is the neighborhood is united. In addition to the board, we've appointed Ben Filler to be a lead liaison on the airport noise issues. And speaking of the airport, a couple of important bullet points. Surf ears, turboprop airplanes are louder than many jets. That was in part of the lawsuit against the county. Airport's data shows that around 5,000 noise complaints were filed with the San Carlos Airport in the first six months of this year. In the first six months of 2013, before Surf Air started using the airport, only 51 complaints were filed. So that's not twice as many complaints. It's not five times as many. It's 100 times. So that's pretty significant. Airport-- and so, over the past month or so, there's been an incredibly huge increase in noise. Takeoffs are disrupting conversations inside of our homes. Low-flying helicopter flights, they're not only disrupting conversations, but they're causing our homes to shake and vibrate. Additionally, the concentration of lead at the San Carlos Airport was measured at over twice the standard level. Only one other airport in California exceeded lead levels. So it's unfortunate that San Carlos is, again, leading in toxics. So the reason I'm here is that the community needs some relief, and we're requesting that city council and staff work with the community to represent us at the county and at the FAA level. I'm beginning to understand that some of these changes may actually have to do with changes in the FAA rules. So that's going to be an exceedingly difficult thing to manage. And, you know, communities of Palo Alto, and Lo Park, Atherton are being represented by their councils and staff, and we just ask that San Carlos does the same. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dimitri. Our next speaker is Jason Mansfield from the Chamber of Commerce, followed by Veronica Dills. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here on behalf of the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce. And we just wanted to give you a little update on past events and formally invite you to upcoming events. So of course, our Art and Wine Fair was super successful, and I think Andy gave you a short report last time. We'll be able to give you a little bit more detailed report next time. The farmer's market has been pretty successful. Every Sunday, and it's been going on for 20 weeks now, we've had about 3,000 people at every market. And as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, you had the city booth where you can ask the mayor, and giving that opportunity, I think, has been great. They're now transitioning to some fall produce, so they'll have squash, and apples, and sweet potatoes, and things like that. We'll still continue to have live music. And in fact, what we're going to be trying to do in coming up on December 11th, we're going to have a teen showcase where we're showing the local youth talent and giving them an opportunity to display their talent and that sort of thing. Other upcoming events, of course, we'll continue to have the Sunday Farmer's Markets and hope to see you there. Then this Wednesday, on October 26th, we'll have a ribbon cutting at The Wine Project at 663 Laurel Street in the evening. And then on Friday morning, on November 4th, we'll have our Access San Carlos. November 9th, we're going to have a mixer at the Peninsula Fitness Ventures at 551 Taylor in the evening. December 11th, as I mentioned, is the Sunday Farmer's Market, but we also are going to have a holiday wine stroll. So I don't know if you know about this, but we've got a peninsula wine trail, mid peninsula wine trail. It's 11 wineries from about Woodside Road-ish up to Harbor. But out of those 11 wineries, nine are actually in San Carlos. So we'll have a holiday wine stroll that afternoon, and then a mixer on December 14th, our holiday mixer, and our awards gala on February 3rd. So hope to see you there. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Jason. The last speaker card I have is Veronica Dills. Good evening.
Hi. I live in San Carlos on Eaton Avenue, and I also wanted to provide some comments about the sidewalk repair. My sidewalk was marked for repair. There's about nine squares in front of my house that were marked, and a four-foot section of the curb. The damage to the curb appears actually to be done by the repaving contractor when they repaved the street. You can see that this damage is circular, done by a machine, and similar damage can be found up and down Eaton Avenue. I asked a separate contractor to provide me an estimate, and they estimated it was going to be up $500 just for that curb portion. So I would like to ask if the city could go back to that contractor to either have them repave or pay for that amount, or that the city accept that responsibility. For the nine square sections, there's only two that potentially are a trip hazard. They're very, very minor places that are being asked to be repaired. And then, you know, 2014, I paid $150 to shave the contrit-- of trip hazards, and that was posed to me as the solution to remove on repair. So I'd like to, you know, I'd like to repair my sidewalk, and I'd like to ask the city to pay 50%. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. And I don't see Mr. Walter here this evening. Ma'am, can I ask, have you spoken to our staff specifically about this issue, or have you submitted any requests?
I have exchanged emails--
I have exchanged some emails with Anthony Riddell.
Okay.
Regarding the paving, he said that he didn't get any response from the contractor, and that potentially, I could submit a claim to the city. I didn't do that because it said it had to be done between six months of the incident, but if that's the best course of action, I'd, you know, be open to that, too.
Okay. I mean, I think continuing to work with our staff would be the best course of action, so--
All right.
But thanks for bringing it to our attention. I have no other speaker cards for public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone here wishing to speak tonight? Well, I appreciate all the comments tonight. We are having a staff retreat, or a council retreat this Friday, and for those of you who are interested in the sidewalk program, we are going to be discussing it on Friday. So thank you for your comments. We will move on to item seven, which is the consent calendar. Consent items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Is there anyone wishing to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Mark, yes?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. All right, we'll move on to item eight, eight A, a public hearing on consideration of adopting ordinance 1512 amending the San Carlos Municipal Code with respect to the fire code. And further-- this is essentially the item that was brought at the last meeting. Is that not right?
That's correct.
So these are amendments to the building code and to the fire code. Mr. Seve.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as noted, Mayor and City Council, it is the second reading of this ordinance that was introduced at the October 10th City Council meeting. And city staff is available to answer any questions that you have or present some information, but we did discuss this and provided a presentation at our last meeting. Our building official, Chris Valley, is here, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Al. Any comments, questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
It's a public--
Oh, thank you. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? I have no speaker cards. All right. Hearing none, I will-- do we need a motion to close the public hearing, or--
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes. All right. And then I need a motion on adopting the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 1512, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code Section 15.04.110 California Fire Code to adopt the 2015 edition of the International Fire Code with the 2016 California Fire Code amendments, including all adopted standards as specified, prescribing regulations governing conditions hazardous to life and property from fire, hazardous materials, or explosion, and for providing the fire safety inspection process for hazardous uses or operations, and establishing a Bureau of Fire Prevention, otherwise known as San Carlos Fire Ordinance. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we need to take both ordinances, separate votes on each of them? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt ordinance 1513, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 15.04, Technical Building Codes, to adopt the 2016 additions of the California Administrative Code, California Building Code, Volumes 1 and 2, California Residential Code, California Electrical Code, California Mechanical Code, California Plumbing Code, California Energy Code, California Historical Code, California Existing Building Code, California Green Building Standards Code, California Reference Standards Code, 1997 Uniform Security Code, the 2012 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code with amendments and modifications, and Safety Assessments Programs SAP placards.
Second, and thank you for taking the longer one.
I have a motion and a second. I suspect there is no discussion. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen. We will move on to item eight B, a public hearing on consideration of introducing an ordinance on commercial linkage fees. Mr. Seve.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, as you recall it, the October 10th City Council meeting, city staff provided you with a presentation with regard to the details of a commercial linkage fee for the City of San Carlos. And the council had an in-depth discussion about that, and we tried to answer a number of questions. And tonight, we're introducing the ordinance that council directed us at the last meeting to go ahead and bring an ordinance forward tonight for your consideration. And as part of that, one of the points of discussion at the last meeting, where there were several options that were presented to the City Council, and there was one option, option number four, building of units or land dedication in lieu of a fee payment by a developer. And there was some discussion about that, and city staff was asked to bring back more information about that. And what we did is, we provided arguments in opposition and arguments in favor of this issue for your consideration this evening, and we're certainly happy to get into a more in-depth discussion or provide you with a presentation. But I just wanted to take the pulse of the City Council in terms of which direction you'd like to go on that. And so what we did is, we brought forward a couple of options for you in terms of the ordinance. We brought forth an ordinance with option four and one without option four. So that is for your consideration this evening. And so with that, I'm going to leave it to the council to either direct us to answer questions or give a more in-deal, in-detail presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Al. Are there any questions? Bob?
I'm sorry, Al. I apologize. But when you did the analysis, are we going for option one, two, three, and four, or one, two, three are already in it? Or-- I'm sorry, I just didn't understand what was shown here.
Yes, Ms. Councilmember Grisilli. So at the last meeting, it seemed like there was consensus with regard to the first three options.
Okay. Okay, fine. That's fine. I was confused with the options. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Ron?
Thanks, Cameron. I got a message from a developer, and I don't know-- it might even be too late to put this in there-- but the question he asked was the option of phasing in the fees so that they started low and then we increased them each year, and that-- and we would potentially revisit them every year in case there was a downturn in the market. And so my question is, your reaction to that, and if other cities have considered that, and what might be the reason possibly either to do it or not to do it?
Well, you know, it's an interesting question, but it's not something that we've spent any time evaluating, and so I hesitate to give you an answer. I don't know of any other cities on the peninsula that have done it that way. I'd look to Mr. Romo. If there's none that we're aware of in the county that have done it like that, it's certainly a novel idea. It's something that we could certainly go back and evaluate, but I would hesitate to give you an answer tonight without doing the evaluation.
Is it something that we could look at even after whatever choice we make is in place?
Absolutely. So you have the opportunity to revisit the ordinance at any time.
Okay.
Can I just add something in response to that question? I think it might help. The way the ordinance is set up is, the fee is set by resolution. So it's actually, you don't have to change the ordinance to adjust the fee to-- So it's actually, you don't have to change the ordinance to adjust the fee to, if there's a hypothetically a change in conditions, the fee could be changed upward or downward.
In other words, there's another step. The resolution will come back to you after you've introduced an ordinance to set the fee. So you could always decide at that time to set it at a lower rate.
Okay. Good to know.
Anything else, Ron?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Al. I have a funny feeling, Ron, that I spoke to the same developer that you did since those questions sounded very similar. I will just mention in passing that after the developer I spoke to mentioned the issue of phasing the fee in to me, there's upsides and downsides to that. I mean, paradoxically, if we were to do that, it might accelerate development in town because people would say, well, if I don't get my project down soon, I'm going to pay more, more in the way of fees, contrary to what the argument was being made, I think, to us that the fees were going to forestall development. And that's really the question that I wanted to get a little bit more perspective on from, first from staff, and then I was also going to ask my colleague, Bob, based on his experience as a developer, to opine on. What's the, what is, what's the likely outcome on the attractiveness of San Carlos as a place in which to do commercial development from imposing these fees? I mean, particularly given that other communities are doing them as well, that we're not the leader.
As noted in your comments, many of the other cities in our county, including cities of our same size and sort of general marketplace are adopting these fees or moving in that I think that, you know, I heard that, an argument from one developer in the last week or so about how our marketplace hasn't matured yet and would be unable to accept this kind of a fee and it might disrupt our market. And so I understand that concern, but I think that, you know, and there may be a rush to get in before the ordinance, before we really consider it, if you put it off or something like that. We've seen that with other kinds of fees. That's a natural reaction in the marketplace as well. But I think that if you look at our marketplace and where we are in Silicon Valley, in the Bay Area, in the region, you know, and notwithstanding trying to forecast the economy itself, I think that we're in incredibly unique position in the City of San Carlos. And I think that our marketplace is very, very strong for a number of different reasons. And I don't believe that a fee like this would imperil our attractiveness for new development. I'd like to add just a couple of last notes. If you look at the east side, one of the things that's unique about our east side, for better or for worse, is that we have older building stock and we have a tremendous capacity with, built into our zoning and general plan to accept new development. So that makes us very attractive, including our access to freeways and things like that. So I don't, I don't think that it would affect our ability to attract new development. And in regards to that particular developer, last point, and larger developments of that, of similar scale, as noted, I think in the report and I noted to that particular developer is our experience, is that if you're going to ask for some extra things, which a lot of these large developments do, they'll ask for extra height or unique circumstances in terms of setbacks and things like that, they can enter into a development agreement with the City of San Carlos and it would be a negotiated agreement. And the City Council in this fee would have the ability to decide whether or not, yeah, or to lower or fees beyond this ordinance. So you have the ability within this ordinance to have that flexibility. So it's a negotiated process and I think that's what also has made us unique.
One quick follow-up to that last point, Al, because that makes a lot of sense to me. So would it be your expectation that most large-scale commercial developments, like for example, Windy Meridian 25 or something, it might be even a little bit smaller, that those are subject to development agreements? That they are not typically just, hey, somebody shows up and they're build it within the zoning code and the way they go?
Well, it could be. I mean, they, if, we could have a project that would just conform to everything. And in that case, they would just be subject to the fees. Or they could ask for a development agreement for some unique, they could, you know, create a unique situation or want to provide community benefits as part of the project. For instance, if it was maybe a traffic issue or some other issue, an environmental issue, maybe, they could still offer to get into that type of agreement. So there's still some flexibility and creativity around that.
Thank you. If I may also, I had mentioned, and don't mean to put you on the spot, Bob, but you are kind of my go-to guy when it comes to development stuff. And if you have anything you'd like to share on this, you know, trade-off between attractiveness and fees, I'd love to hear it. If not, that's fine, too.
You know, I don't really have any direct, quite honestly, involvement in my history of commercial, because we did just residential. But as Al said, we used to do development agreements almost on every project and they were all to conformity a lot of times. You know, it was all set up. But you do it because, it just like, I think I harken back to our hotel that we just did. There was a give and take on that and that's what a developer would look at. So if, again, it worked out if there's an extra, let's say, again, depending on the size, it all depends on the dollars. Talking about $100,000 for a $5 million project, they're going to try to get it lower, but it's not going to be a problem. If it's $2 million on a $5 million project, that's, that's going to be one they're going to talk to you about. And, but again, right now, the economy the way it is, if there's an opportunity to build something and it's zoned there, Al can speak to this, I mean, I would imagine the line's out the door, you know, and this is a good economy. So you make, you make it work somehow or another. And again, this city is good with being able to negotiate. There's some cities that you can't, but this, I know our city does, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. Ron, looks like you have a follow-up question?
I do, thanks. So, based on what Bob said, Al, I mean, the interest in building, I think the question comes down to, if we impose these linkage fees, is it a major disincentive, is it a minor disincentive, or is it almost inconsequential to builders who are going to come in with large-scale projects? I don't know if that's a fair question, but, you know, it, we don't want to discourage people coming in, but we want something that benefits us. So I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on that?
I think, again, our marketplace is very strong and I think it's going to get even better for our city over the next few years. And there's tremendous interest in our community, on the east side in particular. As we know, some very large pieces of land are going to change hands in the very near future. And it will not, in my discussions with those folks who are interested, it will not discourage them from doing what they need to do. They want to build on the peninsula and there's only one peninsula and they're going to want to be here. So, but if I was to put my developer hat on and reality check hat, I mean, any new fee is, you know, they're not looking favorably upon it. But, you know, I think that if everybody in the county adopted this fee, we would still be competitive. Even if we didn't have it, sure, people would want to come here perhaps a little more, but we're not putting ourselves as at a disadvantage, I believe, in the marketplace with this.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, we're considering these alternatives with the ordinances. Is it your feeling that developers, if we said, we would rather you just pay the fee? Or are, do you think that they'd be more willing to donate, to donate land in lieu of paying that fee?
Well, I think that...
Or they'd rather just write a check?
They'd probably rather write a check because it's a long-term headache for those guys. You know, it may be easier for a smaller developer to do an off-site development project. A big developer is just going to write a check.
So if we include that option, that gives us the most flexibility?
I would say yes. In looking at these, when we came back to you at the last meeting, we kind of said, well, we're taking a neutral position. But I think in our review of the pros and cons that we presented you with here, it doesn't hurt the city. In fact, it probably provides the City Council with more flexibility to adopt it. And it doesn't have to go in effect anyway. It's only an optional, it's an optional thing, anyway. Again, it provides flexibility. I don't believe it takes anything out of the ordinance. But it, from a development standpoint, it may be, as the subcommittee said, it may be unlikely that it would ever occur, but it gives you flexibility.
Okay, thanks.
Through the chair? Just briefly, Al, several times you referred to about the potential for significant new development on the east side and I just want to make sure, clarify for folks, many people in town, east side means east side residential neighborhood and while that, there certainly are impacts that always have to be assessed for any east side development, I think you were mostly talking about the commercial and industrial area that's somewhat removed from the residential spaces. Is that correct?
That's correct. Thank you for the clarification. I was mostly referring to the L3 communications property at Britton and Industrial.
Thanks, Mark. Bob?
I just wanted to, excuse me, add on, Ron, believe me, it's much easier to write a check. We wrote, I don't think we ever...
And that was my suspicion.
We wrote a, I mean, but having said that, I think the purpose of trying to get more housing is we want people to dedicate. So are you saying that we should, in other words, our housing subcommittee recommended that we didn't take this option either or? Are you saying we should take the option either or?
I'm saying that it provides...
Because I know what they're going to do if you give them either or.
They're going to write a check, yeah?
Yeah.
I agree. And then again, it just gives you another option. If you had an option to weigh both, the council had the option, it gives you two options instead of one. That's all staff is saying. So I don't think it hurts to adopt it unless you do. I don't see...
If you adopt it, it gives them an out. Who gets to choose? Do we get to choose or the developer get to choose?
Well, the city would get to choose.
Okay, so we'll say, well, thanks a lot for offering the right to check, we want housing.
We could say, the City Council could say that, city staff could recommend that, city council could say that.
Because that's what, Ron, that's what you and I, we talked about in our... The other thing is relative, it's, I don't think we're going to be at a disadvantage anywhere in this peninsula because every city, if it hasn't set up this linkage fee, is going to set up this linkage fee. So I think we're going to be, I mean, in a matter of a year or two, I think everybody's going to have it, or they should.
Part of me was playing devil's advocate.
Mark, I see your light is on. You have some additional comments? We do have a couple of public comment on this topic as well.
I just have one thing, I want to make sure I'm understanding the little by-play between Bob and Ron here. My instinct generally is not to create more options because what that does is it creates a richer field for negotiations, okay? Because it's, at least all the developers I've met, which admittedly is a small number, I mean, if the rule says X and they want to do Y, it's not like they throw up their hands and go, well, okay, I guess we're never going to deal with San Carlos. What they do is they come in and say, hey, we'd like to do X rather than Y. And if we don't actually specify what the various options are, it puts us in a better negotiating position. There's at least an argument to that extent. Be interested in your comments on that.
Well, in this case, I, I'm not sure, and maybe the city attorney is going to want to weigh in, but I think if you don't provide this option, then it's not there, right? So for instance, a developer could not say, okay, I want to build this housing elsewhere. I'm going to, I'm going to buy an apartment building and I'm going to switch it over to affordable housing. If you don't have that option in this ordinance, I don't think they could offer to do that. That's my understanding. Is that your understanding? Or is... That's my understanding. So I think without it, you're right, it does limit, it does limit it down to a very focused thing, so.
Can I ask if that's the lawyer's understanding?
I was looking at another item, so you'll have to repeat the question for me, I apologize.
Basically, I was asking Al whether or not we would be in a better negotiating position to not provide an option in the ordinance because then it would not be defined and it would be subject to purely negotiations. And if I understood Al's comment back, he was saying that the nature of this particular ordinance is that if we don't put the option in the ordinance, even we can't say, oh, by the way, we'd be happy to have you, you know, if you want to buy an apartment building and retrofit it and turn it into affordable housing, we wouldn't be able to accept that. That's the question.
Yeah, the ordinance is the baseline regulatory framework and if it was something outside the ordinance, you would have to have a development agreement. That'd be your limited choice.
Well, that, okay, just for, that doesn't necessarily turn it off for me because, you know, many of our things have developed, these scale projects have development agreements. And again, that's the negotiating process. So I think the answer I'm hearing back is, is it would be subject to negotiation. Okay.
Could be. Yeah, could be.
It's like everything else is going to depend on the scope of the project and whether developer is willing to negotiate with us on some of those points.
Now's the time for public comment. I have three speaker cards. Our first speaker this evening is Leora Tenwacko, followed by Victor Toriano. Good evening again.
Hello again, Councilman. Leora Tenwacko from the Housing Leadership Council. Thank you again for considering this impact fee. We absolutely think that it's best practices in San Mateo County and it really helps to address the jobs, housing imbalance that we have here. As you guys were discussing the last nitty-gritty details of it, I was texting with Evy Seivers, who's our ED, and so we were like, is more flexibility better for developers? What happens? And she said that maximum flexibility for developers can create better outcomes. Obviously, there's sometimes issues with that, but she had a couple of caveats. She said if you're looking for land instead of in lieu fees, it should be an acre minimum and the land should be buildable, entitled, and already have hookups. So, you know, as you're talking about negotiations, right, you need to be able to make sure you know what you're asking for, right, from the developers and make sure all of those sort of safeguards are in place. And, yeah, I mean, it all depends on a lot of different things, right? Scale of the project, as you said, and all those. So basically, though, we're really glad that you guys are adopting these fees and we support more flexible policies as a general rule. And we also are excited to working with you to see what you guys do with the funds because, you know, that's really the name of this game, right? And a sort of other more anecdotal note, I was talking to a staff member at another jurisdiction in the county and I said, do you ever get pushback for your impact fees? Their impact fees are $16 a square foot for retail and commercial. And he said, all we get is a check. We don't get any pushback, you know, we don't get any mess from the commercial developers. The residential developers, because of the increased fees, are a little bit more reticent. But if you don't pass these, you're really just literally leaving money on the table. So thank you for moving forward.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Victor Toriano, followed by David Crabbe. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember staff. I was here last time. My name is Victor Toriano. I am representing the San Mateo County Building and Construction Trades. I was here last time at the study session. I had some comments there. I would just like to say that we are in full support of Staff's report and we recommend his adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And now our friend, David Crabbe. Good evening, David.
Good evening, all. I obviously am in support of the linkage fee. It's, there is a direct, the Nexus study showed the direct connection between commercial development and the need for housing and the fee makes sense. I wish there were a market rate way to do, a market way to do this, but it doesn't seem to be. As far as the flexibility, I do prefer the greater flexibility. Pay the fee or pay, or donate a piece of property and you do an analysis on the property to see if it equals the amount of fee. I don't even know if it needs to have all the approvals that was, Leora mentioned, but it should be designed for, it should be residential zone for the density that we need. Also, they could build, they could go in with another nonprofit developer and give some money to that nonprofit developer to build housing on a different property. So the more flexibility you have, I think the better off you are. But the bottom line is, please support the concept of the fee. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on public comment on this item? Hearing none, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce ordinance number...
1514.
1514.
1514, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adding Chapter 8.51 to the San Carlos Municipal Code, establishing commercial linkage fees for new commercial developments in the city. And Greg, can you remind me which one doesn't have the option?
I believe it's A does not have the option.
Then I'm going to say, reference ordinance A.
All right. I have a motion.
I'll second, but through the chair. So, Mr. Obert, so you're saying that basically you want to just say, we want you to develop housing as opposed to write us a check?
No, no. I thought when I was asking Greg was that just write us a check.
Or does it say--
Oh, it doesn't have it? Okay. I'll still second it, but, okay, go ahead.
All right. I have a motion and a second discussion.
You know, the, I'm sorry, through the chair, the housing, you know, when Ron and I were sitting down, I mean, I sort of, I understand this flexibility concept, but if you give them the option, they're going to write the check. And that's the thing that's bothersome in that, it may end up that way anyway. We may just say, okay, fine, write us the check. But I'd like to sort of, I don't want to say jump through hoops, but I'm trying to put a, I don't know, a little pressure of trying to build some housing. And that's what I, you know, it'd be nice if somebody would help us.
Oh, that's why you're asking me, so in other words, you might almost prefer something which said, you can't write us a check, you have to build housing.
Well, and then when you negotiate, well, I'm happy to negotiate it. But that's what I was looking at, because I was, you know, this flexibility concept, I mean, you can do it with a development agreement or any other way. I don't know. I mean, I'm--
My, questions of staff. My understanding was that neither of the options actually does that.
Yeah, that's correct. I think there's some legal issues with compelling the building of housing, and the outside council drafted this ordinance isn't here tonight, but the, I think it has to be an option in the code. And so the option, ordinance B, has an option that the developer can propose it--
Propose?
Propose housing instead of paying the fee, but it has to start there. It has to be sort of their choice. And then they can also pay, they can also pay the fee, but forcing them to build the housing, I think, is something that we'd have to research and come back to, because I don't have the answer tonight. But I believe the answer is you can't compel that choice.
I have to admit, Bob, I didn't understand where you were going earlier. If there was a way to compel the construction of housing, I would rather do that, but--
Okay, okay. As long as we give ourselves some flexibility, as I keep hearing tonight, I'd just like to put a little pressure on somebody to give us some housing, but whatever. Go ahead.
It would encourage somebody to, when they'd see that language in the ordinance, they might actually look at it and see if it's viable for them, but that's up to them.
In that case, Bob, you might want to withdraw your second of my motion.
I'm still second to the discussions.
Okay. That's true.
So, Ron, did you have any comments you wanted to share?
No, I just, I wanted the option that gives us the most negotiating power, and it seems like B does that.
But he's got, but we got A.
I know, so I'm going to vote against it.
Well, so, I mean, if I could just say a couple of comments, I mean, I agree that it's unlikely, given the amount of available land, that that would be the proposal. But I think I'm persuaded that, you know, it's probably a 2% better solution to offer the option. So if either of you gentlemen want to offer a substitute amendment, I think we have three that would go with option B.
Well, I'll offer the substitute that we, do I need to just repeat the entire language? I'm happy to do that.
You make a substitute motion, and I think that would approve alternative B is what you're proposing to do, which I think you could shorthand it, because we've already read and you're formally introducing this question.
Mark's motion with the substitution of ordinance B. Is that passed muster?
That passed muster. I'll second that. Is there any discussion?
So, Mark, what do you think? Well, frankly, obviously, I wouldn't have made the motion I did if I didn't think A was superior to B. But the important thing here, which I don't want to lose sight of, is getting the linkage fees established, one way or another, regardless. So I guess at most, what's going to happen is that we'll end up being split, so I will support Ron's alternative motion, even though I don't think it's the right thing to do, or the best thing to do. It's the right thing to do, not the best thing to do.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, we'll have Crystal call the roll on Ron's substitute motion.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes. All right. We will move on to item nine, new business, consideration of introducing an ordinance amending San Carlos Municipal Code with respect to our residential inspecting program requiring mandatory balcony and deck inspections.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
I need to step out for a minute. Can I ask that we not take votes until I get back?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Sebey?
Mayor, members of the City Council, given the recent discoveries in balcony structure defects, we thought that it would be a good idea to introduce an ordinance to the City Council with regard to inspection, deck inspection requirements, balcony inspections for apartments. And I'm going to turn it over to our building official, Chris Valley.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. As Mr. Sebey mentioned, we're here tonight to talk about a mandatory balcony and deck inspection requirements, ordinance for our apartment inspection program. First, I'd just like to kind of perhaps just provide a background of the program itself and give you an idea of the work involved with it. It's otherwise known as the Apartment Inspection Program. It involves 208 structures, a little bit less than 1,900 living units. Our inspections, approximately half of our inspections require a follow-up site visit to verify corrections have been completed. And really, the main item of this slide here is, we haven't, we believe there's an estimated 500 decks and balconies associated with the structures in the program. Some resident, or some common violations that we note out in the field is smoke detectors, improperly secured water heaters, loose guards and handrails, lint buildup behind dryers, dryer exhaust ducts missing or not attached altogether, furnace air filters clogged or the wrong size. We're checking anti-tip devices for freestanding ranges, GFCI receptacles, making sure those are right, missing or clogged, combustion air vents, and then laundry rooms with no makeup air vents. We check electrical panels, grease screens at kitchen hoods, dishwasher air gaps, miscellaneous plumbing, electrical and mechanical items. And then the tenants can also schedule an inspection if they want, under the program to address items that their landlord is not addressing for them. So the reason we're here is because of the Berkeley deck collapse. I'd also like to add, there was a deck collapse two weekends ago in France that killed four people. It was another cantilevered balcony on a structure that was built, I believe, 15 years ago. So I'll add that to this as well. But the Berkeley collapse happened last June. It killed six people. It hospitalized seven. And it resulted in an emergency ordinance passed by Berkeley requiring examination of all balconies in the city. We're somewhat fine-tuning our approach to this and having it kind of be, or having it be under the apartment inspection program, because that's where our eyes are right now, and it's not that much of a hardship on our end to, you know, make sure that these things are looked at. And so soon after the balcony collapse in Berkeley, in fact, two weeks after that, we included language in our annual letter that strongly recommended that owners have their structures checked for structural defects and so forth. And it was included in the, like I said, the annual apartment inspection letter that we mailed to the owners. Not necessarily a result of our letter, but a result of the Berkeley collapse. An owner of a building on Elm Street, one block up, second building up, they had a, and I believe it was an engineer that looked at their balconies and discovered that all 30 of them were structurally deficient, in other words, unsafe. And they came in for a permit for replacement of all the balconies. Instead of cantilevered, they opted for tubular steel-supported decks to replace the existing. And here's a picture of the dry rot. I labeled it dry rot in case there was any confusion, but that is dry rot. And that came from, I believe, the inspector that was out there. And then here's a picture of the in-progress replacement with the tubular steel supports, much safer. And it's work almost complete. It's not the best of pictures, but it gives you an idea that they're, in fact, right now, they're wrapping up the guardrails in that particular structure. And so this is the language of, the inspection language itself. It says, shall be inspected within six months of the adoption of this section. And it allows the owner of a property to choose, you know, licensed contractor, pest control, architect, engineer, and such to have a look at this property. They then provide us a letter stating that it has been looked at. It's either deemed safe, or it's not. It's very black and white. And then it also gives a definition for weather-exposed areas. So it's not just decks, balconies, it's also exposed walking surfaces, can be stairways, could be, so it's really just anything that's exposed to the weather. And that is it in a nutshell. I should add that in my 20 years as a building official, I think this is frankly one of the more important and valuable things that we've brought to this podium. And so if there's any questions or discussion, I'm here.
Thank you, Chris. Bob?
Chris, do we have, okay, so basically, now, you've, I had a question, but you answered it here with, it's either licensed general contractor, pest control, licensee, licensed architect, or licensed engineer, which is going to cost X dollars--
Yes.
--for add-on to the inspection. Is the city going to add on a cost?
No, we're not. This cost is solely borne, for lack of a better phrase, with the property owner.
Right. I understand they're going to pay for this, but is, when we go to inspect it, are we going to add on an extra cost by, we're inspecting?
We're not.
Okay. You know, just to ask, the tubular ones, I digress for a moment, you're putting in the tubular, are they in concrete at the bottom? The tubular--
They are anchored in a, in a new pier foundation.
Right, okay. And how long do we expect the tubes to last?
I would have to talk to the engineer, but it's going to be a lot longer than--
Oh, I know it's a lot longer than it would. I say that because years ago, our company built on stilts, as I would call it, you know, and people have to pay attention to those, too. But again, it's going to take a long time.
These are primed and also protected against the elements. So it's not just exposed steel.
Right. It's a modern, modern version.
Exactly, yes.
So I would assume it's a few hundred dollars extra that somebody's going to have to pay for, well, again, depending on how they make the deal with whoever they get to do this.
Exactly.
And is that, is that individual or that company that guarantees, aren't they sort of guaranteeing that it's in good shape? So aren't they going to be liable then if there's something that's wrong with it?
They will.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they're putting their name on a letter that's going to be given to us, and we're going to put it in the file.
All right. And you've seen those before from other contractors or engineers or things, that they put their name on it?
We've seen similar letters, yes.
Okay.
And I should note that this, this right here is basically a cut and paste from the Berkeley inspection--
But I mean, there's engineers out there that'll sign and saying, yeah, it's good, good order, and it'll stay. Okay.
Or they won't.
Or they won't. No, I get it. I'm just wondering, as long as, I'm looking for ones that will. So, okay, thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chris. My question at least starts off, I'm not sure, Chris, if it's a question for you or a question for Greg, it may be, maybe both of you. And I apologize for not asking this before the meeting. What I'm curious about a little bit is, I think this is a great idea, a great program. What's the special nature in the law of our oversight regulation of, I guess, multifamily housing that allows us to do this? But for example, I don't think we're proposing doing this for balconies that are on a single-family home.
No, we're not.
So what, why the, I'm going to say discrepancy, but why the difference in treatment?
I think it's a discretionary policy decision. I think there, I'm not aware of any difference as far as our authority to using the police power of the city to have an inspection program. I think the issue that's been identified is arising out of the multifamily housing deck collapse. And then there might be some factual issues of multifamily that are, have a higher propensity of having more people on them, so they make them more vulnerable. The way multifamilies are constructed, it might not be up to the typical standard of your single-family residential structure. You know, they're built with lower quality, I guess you might be able to say. So there are some legitimate differences between the types of structures. And then multifamily, too, this is from recollection, they're three or four stories, so the height of a deck collapse, the consequences are greater because of the height.
And by the way, thank you for that. I appreciate it. I was not proposing, it was not, that was not an entree to say, I think we should expand the ordinance, okay? Necessarily. I just, I was just honestly curious and was wondering whether there was some reason we didn't oversee that, and you're saying it's a matter of choice. Again, I think this is a great idea. I guess the question I have, though, is, well, to be frank, why do we stop with just balcony issues? Jeff knows, because I was talking to him about this recently, when I was knocking on doors years ago, running, running for office here. Just by accident, I walked through a number of apartment buildings, multifamily housing buildings in San Carlos, where, you know, to my eye, there were broken steps leading up stairs and issues that, to me, were kind of a safety issue.
Yeah.
So is there a reason why we're limiting this just to balconies as opposed to other things?
I just stated about five minutes ago that it's not limited to just balconies. It's limited, it includes stairways and other exposed surfaces.
Great. See, I shouldn't have left the room.
Yeah, sorry, Bob.
No, no, I'm very, I'm even more happy to hear that than I was about doing it just for balconies. So, okay.
Language of the exact inspection language is maybe on your screen right now, I believe.
And last question is, do we have a process in place for people to report these issues? Or--
Under the inspection program, the tenant can give us a call and fill out a complaint investigation form, and we'll go out and have a look. And we always make it clear, though, try to work this out with your landlord first, but there are scenarios where that's not happening, and so we will help out.
And I'm glad to hear that as well, and I would just ask that, on occasion, perhaps, when we're sending out quarterly newsletters and whatnot, it might be worth reminding folks that that program exists. Thank you.
Exactly.
Okay. We have one public speaker card on this item. Mr. Dan Williamson?
Hi, my sound system.
Good evening, sir.
Mayor, council. I'm Dan Williamson. I've been in San Carlos a long time. I did send, I believe you got a copy of, of one, two pages, yeah, okay, you all got it. And my issue, I guess, when I saw this wording is that it's like the pest control inspectors, if they can't see through the plaster, they say, I'm not responsible for what I can't see. So what I'm saying is that there is going to be maybe some pushback by the property owners, but they may actually have to do some selective demolition to expose and be able to look and see, because of my long association with buildings. I seldom see what's right, I always see what's wrong. So I'm guessing that not all general contractors have the experience to do this, and they could be smart enough to say, I'm not really qualified for it. But I am in the process or the company that I'm employed by. On our multi, multi-use buildings, where there's retail and there's residential above, we are building in a, in this office, an ability to look up or remove a panel to, across the whole width, so you can look and see. The Berkeley failure was really a failure of the moisture membrane and the walking surface at the wall, and it was all the way across. So it was going on for a long time. And the tenants were not likely to feel it with their feet. I have no idea what the walking surface was, but I'm off on my time. So I will make two statements. So I will make two statements, I guess. Ideally, this ordinance will work perfectly, and no one will ever know because it worked. And should the ordinance fail only once, there will never be enough tears. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, sir. Chris, do you want to address any of the comments that were made?
There are probably numerous balconies and decks out there that do, that do have hidden, not hidden, but concealed framing areas that will need to be looked at. It was, so it can either be done through a vent or a pilot hole of some sort, but they will need to get looked at. So the intent of this is to bring awareness also to this, and to, you know, not everyone like the owner next block up has the initiative to, you know, see something that, or to read about a Berkeley incident and then have their own property looked at, and have such a huge discovery of structural defects. So this is kind of more for perhaps those that, owners that either don't realize the importance of having decks checked, or even if the, knowing the importance, still don't take action. And so it's, it's well-intended. It's, it might not be perfect, but it is based upon what Berkeley did, and I think it's, it's the awareness that we're looking for here and getting people's eyes on things.
Okay. Thank you. Mark, do you have an additional question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chris. Sort of a follow-up to that, and I appreciate the comments that this gentleman made before your, Chris, your recent response. Reading the ordinance, it looks to me fundamentally what we're relying on is that it's a licensed contractor, licensed and qualified to do the inspection, who's signing their name to this and thereby accepting liability for having done the inspection properly. Is that correct?
That, yes.
So that, for example, to take an example, you said there are some balconies where the support system is not, you know, you can't just look at it. You'd have to bore a hole or something to look at it. We're relying on them knowing what they're doing to know that they have to do that.
Exactly. So I, perhaps, you know, decks that are exposed, that have exposed framing and all that, that might be a better use for a pest control specialist. Decks that are cantilevered and concealed, you may want to consider a licensed engineer or architect or otherwise.
I guess the question I have, the question I have is, given that kind of difference of decks, are we specifying in here that these types of decks must have a licensed contractor, whereas these types of decks you can have?
No, we're just giving people an op, a vast option to have their decks looked at. And we're giving, we're not specifying this deck needs to be looked at by this particular person, or this type of construction needs to be addressed by this licensed professional. It's, we're just giving people the option. That's the main point.
And what's the, given, I think, what the gentleman was saying about, you could understand, we could all understand the risks associated with the, basically, the wrong kind of contractor looking at the wrong kind of deck, one that he or she's not familiar with, why are we not proposing a more nuanced ordinance?
Meaning, having it zeroed down, or having it pinpointed more to licensed professionals versus structural pest?
At least, at least for those kinds of decks where we really believe that you have to be a licensed professional to assess it.
Okay. Then my response to that would be, again, this was verbatim from the Berkeley ordinance, so I, and I read through it, it seemed reasonable. Then my suggestion would be to have it be that a licensed engineer or architect be tasked with providing us the site visit.
If I could, I don't mean to, because I'm not a wordsmith, so, apologize, but they're gonna have to sign. So if I'm a pest guy, and I come out and I go, I'm walking away, I'm not touching it, I'm not gonna do it. Because if I have to put my name on it, I'm liable now. So, in other words, they're not gonna do it unless they can, they're gonna be liable. That's my point.
I understand the logic, and I appreciate that, but, but, you know, liability doesn't, isn't necessarily a turnoff for everybody.
No, I understand, but I'm just...
And all I'm saying is that if we know that, or we believe that certain types of individuals ought not to be inspecting certain types of decks, why don't we say that? That's another way of putting what I'm asking.
Yeah, okay. But then you'd have to define, how many kinds of decks are there? Five million? I mean, there's, there's a ton of decks.
The language in this, the inspection language here, it addresses kind of every scenario that we have out there. It doesn't limit them to one or the other. It allows some options, and that's, that's the intent of the wording.
I understand what the intent of the wording is. I understand the logic behind it. I'm just questioning the logic about whether that's, in fact, if we're gonna go, as we should, do this in order to protect public health and safety, whether we're actually getting enough bang for the buck and that, that, you know, could we perhaps go a little bit further?
At this moment, I don't have any recommendations on how to take this any further, other than what I've presented.
All right. Ron?
Yeah, just a quick question. This whole issue of liability, and Dan in his sheet that he gave us specifically mentioned this part of, does submitting an affidavit form provide, provided by the city hold the city harmless? I guess my question is, is this sort of a CYA? Or even absent this, could somebody say, well, the city didn't require us to do the inspection and, or didn't require the owner of my apartment building to do the inspection, therefore, I'm gonna sue the city?
I think I'll answer that question.
Okay.
The city has something called discretionary immunity, so there's no, no liability for, you know, failing to inspect or inspecting. We just have, we have a duty to enforce our ordinances in general. And the, so there's not any liability for proposing one type of inspection or another, or having it open-ended as this ordinance provides. The other thing, the other aspect is, some of the focus has been on the contractor liability, but ultimately, the property owner's liable. And most multi-residential property owners are gonna have insurance and have every motivation to make sure their building, once a repair is undertaken, it's gonna be done properly. So I think that's what's assumed by this ordinance language. And just reading it here today, I'm looking at the idea of what's kind of the practical aspect of it. So if a building changes hands, there's gonna be a termite inspection. So they're probably saying, well, let's make it flexible so that a termite inspector can look at it. And termite inspectors actually are the type of inspection I would want to start with on something like this, because that's, the dry rot is what caused the Berkeley deck collapse. It's the water, as this gentleman said, the water intrusion, there's a vapor, a water barrier on top of these enclosed decks, and if it has any kind of a leak or bad flashing, the water gets in, and it, in no time, it can deteriorate. So I think that's, it's trying to address that type of inspection. So I wouldn't necessarily take that out. The work has to be done satisfactorily to our code, so we already have some protection. The building code's gonna require it. And the, and the building code might give Chris, or the chief building official, the ability to say, you need an engineer to do this, because I can't sign, I'm not gonna sign off on a final inspection. So it's all gonna depend on the circumstance of the building. You know, if the deck is cantilevered out three feet, and you could establish that the, it goes, I forget what the rule is, but six feet into the, into the structure, where you probably have a structurally sound, up to the building code, cantilever. If that's not adequate, then the vertical support's gonna be required, and that's all building code stuff. So I, probably just looking at it, there's enough flexibility for the property owner and to be able to get the opinion that they need. And then we have the tools of the, of the building, general building code to make sure that whatever is done is done safely. Because this, remember, I heart this as an inspection ordinance, every three years inspections, so it's supposed to turn up a problem before it becomes a catastrophe.
Any further questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we introduce ordinance number?
1515.
1515, an ordinance of the city councils of the city of San Carlos, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 15.34, residential inspection program requiring mandatory balcony and deck inspections for group R2 occupancies.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Well, go ahead, Mark.
No, no, Ron, you go first. You, you said.
All right. I just want to say, I think this is really a good, a good step for us to take, and it occurred to me during this discussion tonight, that the one construction job I ever had in my life, back when I was teaching, was a summer job working for my neighbor across the street. And what we, all we did that summer was repair people's decks and balconies. And I was amazed that we, and this was a very nice apartment building that we were doing, we spent all of our time on one apartment building in Mountain View. And I could not believe how much dry rot was in there. A little bit of moisture really caused a lot of damage, and it was surprising to me how much work we had to do to, to, you know, get stucco off, which I thought was waterproof. Little did I know. So I think it's a good, I think it's really a smart thing that, that we're doing, and I understand firsthand why these things need to be done.
All right. Thanks, Ron. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna end up voting against this, but I want to be clear that, that in no way, shape, or form means that I don't think we should be doing these inspections and having this requirement, because I absolutely think we do, and we should. And I very much appreciate staff having been proactive to take this next step. But I'm voting against it just because I believe we actually should go a little bit further. This is, you know, given the horrific thing that happened, I would like to see us be a little bit more belt and suspenders here. And so that's why I'm gonna vote against it, but I definitely agree that keeping our residents safe from falling off their balconies is a really good thing and an important thing.
Seeing no other lights on, Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
No.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda. As we discussed, we'll adjourn tonight in memory of Robert Bledsoe, who will be sorely missed, has many friends throughout the city of San Carlos, made great contributions to our city, and we extend our condolences to his family. And we are adjourned.